Members, it's time for us to start our meeting and we've also formed a quorum. I now call the meeting to order. At this meeting, we have twenty-one deputations and twenty-seven individual members of the public. So altogether forty-eight. This meeting will be divided into two parts. In the first session, I'll let the deputations or individuals speak first. According them, three minutes each. After they've spoken, I'll invite members to ask questions or make comments. Finally, I'll ask the administration to provide a brief reply. This meeting will end at 1:00 P M. I just received from Mr. Kenneth Leng a motion. I believe it is a motion. At eleven-twenty-five, we'll have a break. During the break, we can discuss the motion to see whether or not we should handle it today and how we should handle it. Can we be given five minutes to speak on whether or not the motion should be handled today and how it should be handled? Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to do that after the break. I hope that all parties concerned can observe the rules of procedure. Mr. Long Kwok-hong, would you please be seated? Mr. Long Kwok-hong, would you please observe? Mr. Long Kwok-hong, would you please observe the rules of procedure? I've already declared the meeting open. Please be seated. Members, members. In order that this meeting can proceed smoothly, please observe the rules of procedure. Today, our chairman, Mr. Lau Wong Fat, is otherwise engaged, so I'll chair the meeting. Just now, I was talking about Mr. Kenneth Leng's motion. I believe it is a motion. At eleven-twenty-five, we'll have a break. I would like to make use of the break to discuss the motion. We can handle the motion today. I believe before twelve-forty-five, if we can finish with the deputations and individuals, altogether forty-eight of them, then we'll be able to handle the motion. Please invite the deputations and individual members of the public to come in. Just now, the clerk told me that she had received motions from Mr. Chan Chi-chun and Mr. Albert Chan. In a moment, their motions will also be distributed to you. Yes, please. The secretary is involved in a number of interest issues. At first, he said that the interests belong to his wife and his family members. And later, we now know that his son is also involved. I think such officials should not attend today's meeting. I'd like to seek a ruling from you that Mr. Paul Chan, the bureau director, should not attend this meeting. As far as I understand, which officials should attend our meetings should be decided by the administration. What if there is a conflict of interest? If there's a conflict of interest, there should be declarations. So in a moment, Paul Chan is to declare his interests. I believe for all parties concerned, interest should be declared. So I would request all deputations and individual members of the public to say right from the very beginning that they request Mr. Paul Chan to step down. Of course, I'd like to remind members that this meeting is to listen to views from deputations and individuals on the revised development proposals for Northeast New Territories New Development Areas Project. So welcome government representatives, deputations, and individual members of the public. The attendance list has already been tabled, so I won't go through the participants one by one. Now, I'd like to invite the deputations and individuals to speak. All of them attending will have three minutes each to speak. As we have quite many people today and we have a number of issues to handle, I'll be very strict with this three-minute rule. So please take note of your speaking time. Of course, if you only need two to three more seconds to finish with your comments, it would be all right. But I will be very strict with time management. In fact, your submissions have already been distributed to members. Your written submissions and verbal remarks will not be protected by Cap 382 Leggo Pals and Privileges ordinance. First, representative of the incorporated owners of Bel Air Monte. Sorry, the speaker is not coming through. Any declaration of interest? Is it tantamount to cheating the leggo if interests are not declared? I'd like all of you to understand the rule of speaking. Before you speak, you have to declare interest, all right? All of us have to do that. Before you speak, you have to declare interests. Sorry, the speaker is not coming through. The speaker is not coming through. I've already invited the first speaker to speak. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Long Kwok-hong, I have not asked you to speak. Would you please observe the rules of procedure such that this meeting can proceed smoothly? Mr. Chairman, I'm here today mainly to say this. For declaration of interest, Bel Air Monte is within Masik Road of Northeast Antique. If that project is to proceed, it will benefit why? Most residents will consider that ever since the start of Hong Kong, land in Hong Kong was created by reclamation or land resumption with so many PRH estates and private estates and buildings completed. Which site in Hong Kong was not reclaimed or obtained by land resumption? If this project is to fail, we're not going to proceed in future. For our next generation, they'll have to sleep under flyovers or on the streets. In front of the truth, the interests of certain people will be affected. I just hope that the government can appropriately handle the issue such that people will have a place to live and work happily and peacefully. As in the past, many organizations and newspapers say that the government has a lot of land sites in hand. If the government is not going to create land now, in ten years' time, we won't have any more land. Where are we going to find land for PRH? Not to speak of private housing. In newspapers, it's written that university graduates are striving to queue up for single-ten PRH units before they have a job. How are we going to satisfy such needs of young, of our young persons? We should not just take care of some of our people. Why should you not ask the administration to take care of these young people as well so that they can be accommodated properly? I read from newspapers that some Leggo members are actually occupying PRH units, but they are enjoying a salary of eighty thousand dollars. When Bel Air Monte had a population intake, I still have the drawings here. Two sites were reserved crossing Masik Road in the development area of Masi Pool. That means during the British colonial era, the land sites were sold and two rich pillars were built crossing Masik Road. So the government should adopt a hard-line approach. Otherwise, our young people won't have anywhere to live in. And I hope that the government can properly and in an insiduous manner our elders, so that our elders will need to move elsewhere. May I remind members that as regards a declaration of interest that applies only to government officials and legislators, deputations and individuals are not required to do so. Next speaker, please. Speaker is off mic. Chairman, our public officer responsible for land planning should not have interest involved. I think this is just common sense. We should not ask a property developer to be at the Secretary for Development. Perhaps Mr. Si Wai-lan has got it wrong. Being accountant is just a sideline of Mr. Paul Chan's business. His proper business is property development, where he has hoarded land in Kootong. And I think that is severe conflict of interest and he should step down at once. And the chairman of this panel, Mr. Lau Wong Fat, has also hoarded had tens of thousands of square meters of land. Even though he has declared interest, he should not be the chairman of this panel anymore. We want the government to withdraw the N E N T plan, not because we don't have housing needs in Hong Kong. Rather, if we continue with our land development policies, that will only create severe social injustice and damage the original plans in the community, will only repeat the mistakes we've made in Tong Chong and Tsinghua. The consultation process of land development, well, you may say that there is already consultation. But in the past few years, residents affected by these plans could not take part in the actual planning of these areas. So they don't have any part to play in the planning of N T. They're told by the government that you will be rehoused in PRH. And then we have an E I A mechanism, but we do not have any social impact assessment mechanism. The government is going to embark on massive development in the N T and yet it has no understanding of the impact on people. For instance, employment and whether elderly persons would suffer from illness or even die as a result. There is no study by the administration in this regard. We will talk about a change in the system. When we want to change the system, for instance, different sectors of the community should be involved in providing housing. I'm asked whether we can use the golf course to achieve our purpose and some legislators have come out to say that this is hostility against the rich. Let me reiterate that government officials with conflict of interest should step down at once and N E N T and D A should be shelved at once. Social conflicts cannot aggravate further. If we shelve the N E N D N D and take it as opportunity, then your time is up. Next speaker, please. Hong Kong Institute of Urban Design. Please turn on the microphone. Yes, next. With Mr. Vincent Ng from Hong Kong Institute of Urban Design. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you legislators. I will focus on the planning of N E N D N D A. Our institute, as always, are gone for accommodation of both city and rural areas so that we can have more housing supply to address the severe housing shortage. We have not changed our position. We note that the plan include town planning considerations and we're pleased to see that. However, we've seen that in the new proposals, many housing sites will have increased density. However, there is no corresponding increase in high limit. It's still set at thirty-five stories. That being the case, to a large extent, the environment will be even more crowded and we will have the warlike effect of buildings. So there is room for improvement in this regard. In a city, buildings should have different heights. If we just limit the height and also the plotteries so and do not allow varying heights, then we will have a new type of warlike buildings with the same height. And then the government should break up large lots so that we will not adjust for large shopping malls and podium developments. In Kaitak, there are provisions or there, there is the plan that there won't be any podium. We support that. We support diversity in building design. So the percentage of PRH in the N D As will be increased from forty percent to sixty percent. We have no objection to that. But the design of our PRH is so standardized. Building design should be a diversity. But in a large plot of land, if we have standard designs of PRH blocks, it would make the community very boring and there will be no special characteristics. We should be flexible in our commercial developments. We should encourage smaller and larger developments to be included in this area. Town planning should be about resolving social issues and should be people-oriented. The government should conduct a social impact assessment. The rural areas should be preserved as far as possible so as to minimize the impact on stakeholders. Well, the, this is the submission of the Hong Kong Institute of Urban Design. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Tony Chen. Before we go into the agenda proper, I'd like to say something in all fairness to Mr. Paul Chan. As far as I know, his wife's family own land in N T N T for private residential development is got an area of two hundred thousand square feet. A point payment of a premium could merge with other plots nearby for residential development. However, under the plan, it has now been incorporated into a PRH development. Now, if Mr. Paul Chan indeed has self-interest, he would have objected to this proposal. This goes to say that civil servants have not really paid heed to the ownership of land in making planning. In last September, as a member of the executive council, Mr. Paul Chan took the initiative to declare interest and this was confirmed by the C E. This goes to say that Mr., goes to prove that Mrs. Chen has not concealed anything. He's also asked his wife and her family to dispose of the lot by open tendering. Going back to the subject of this hearing, we lack land for long-term development. In order to control property prices, we must have new land for housing. In the nineteen-sixties and seventies, we developed new towns such as Shatin, Tumon and Changkuan Oh. A self-sufficient new town must have two prerequisites. First, we, there must be a critical mass of population to four hundred, six hundred thousand people and it must be served with proper means of public transport. The N E N T and the A's will have a target population of four hundred and sixty thousand and the station in Kootong North was reserved for building the Lotma Chow extension of Israel. There have been a lot of studies by consultancies and the areas include the proportion of public and private housing, environmental impacts and job opportunities and infrastructure. So after very careful planning, the package is now put to the public for consultation and such efforts should not be aborted. That's the proposal that Hong Kong Golf Course or Fanning Golf Course should be resumed for development. Now, this is not a zero-sum game. If we want to develop the golf course, there must be a resoning and we have to go through E I As and ecological impact assessment and the impact on the stream causes. And near the golf course, there are residential developments and hospitals and schools and also your time is up. Next, please. Next. Ms. Bonnie Leng from Civic Party. Thank you. A member of the panel once again gave Mr. Paul Chan the opportunity to declare interest. However, he has chosen to remain silent. The lies are already exposed and yet have chosen not to admit his mistake and we urge him to step down. Forty-eight hectares of land are reserved for those who occupy four thousand square feet of land for land exchange. Well, although there are limits, according to the media, among the eight private residential lots, only one belongs to the government. All other are being held by two major property developers. So if in Sichuan, land exchanges are allowed, over seven point six eight million square feet of land can be developed. Henderson and owns a lot of land there. So you can see that the so-called enhanced new town development mode is, was supposed to be public-private sector participation. However, limited information has been disclosed for payment of premium. You cannot dispel the concern that there is collusion between the government and the private and business sector. We must enhance the transparency of the premium mechanism and the enhanced model to ensure that this is not really collusion and transfer benefits. If the government cannot change public perception and resume land and if you just delay the plan for one year, the government should consider resuming the land to avoid conflict of interest. And the government has not responded to the aspirations of the public. The government proposes in situ rehousing should be done by PRH and then excise payment for, at up to six hundred thousand dollars can be paid. However, effective farmers and villagers are not asking for that. They would like to continue with farming in Sichuan. The excise allowance cannot allow them to build new houses and rent land and you cannot help them to resolve problems in relocation, including the rights of use of access. Only five hectares of land is reserved for relocation is government land. The rest is held by the private sector. So if the government, the government can ensure that there will be a reforming arrangement or agreement between the farmers and also the land owners. So the Civic Party has other proposals, but time is limited. Please refer to our submission. Thank you. Ms. Chow Koo-yin, the self-help group for defending the rights of farmers in Northeast Antique. I think Mr. Paul Chan must step down, given the scandals exposed and the N E N T and D As should be shelved because he has no credibility whatsoever in leading the project. And villagers and friendly groups are not blindly opposing to development because according to many studies, there is a lot of vacant land or land being hoarded by property developers in both the urban and rural areas. They are not being used properly. Recently, we all talk about defending golf course. So long as a small portion of it is used, then we can satisfy the demand for housing in the whole N E N T plan. I'm a young person. I hope to say this to Mr. Paul Chan. Please don't use the excuse of resolving the housing problem of young people for the development of N E N T and the rural areas of Hong Kong. Young people will speak out for themselves. There is no need for you to be our advocate. And villagers, of course, want our community to progress. However, we do not want a top-down approach. We don't want this kind of political violence. What we want is community-led development. In my opinion, when faced with this huge problem, given that Hong Kong focuses on money, economics and politics in this Northeast Antique project, only those in power, those who are rich in Hong Kong who will benefit, not the ordinary people, not those members of the public who are in need of housing. I'd like you to understand that point. Just yesterday, a Pingcha resident who back in the Easter holidays participated in the container terminal industrial incident was arrested and taken away from his home. So Mr. Paul Chan should step down. Next, Mr. Choi Shew-wa. Mr. Lee Shew-wa. I'd like all participants to observe the rules of procedure such that our meeting can proceed smoothly.
Good morning. I have a few questions for the administration. I'd like to have answers from it. Given the planning project proposed, did the administration assess the impact on Kootong residents? If the answer is in the negative, how is it going to strike a balance such that the villagers there are fairly treated? The government always says that Hong Kong has a housing problem. There are housing needs and the problem has to be solved. However, Kootong residents are to bear the brunt. There are so many people in Hong Kong queuing up for PRH. The administration has not made use of the deserted land in Hong Kong for the development of PRH estates. Rather, it lays its hands on new towns like Changkuan Oh and Tsinghua. There are problems in those new towns and they're not solved yet. Now, you want to do something about N E N T, but you have not assessed the impact of the proposal on the villagers, the residents. Are these residents and villagers Hong Kong people? Have you ever treated them as humans? Por Chen, I won't call you the bureau director because you're not qualified. Did you ever go and have dialogues with the villagers and residents? If not, how can you make appropriate arrangements to handle all the problems they're in today? Because you said that Hong Kong has a housing need, in future, Hong Kong will be destroyed by your administrative measures. Who did you consult? You consulted those people who didn't even know where Ku Tong Village was. It's useless to consult them. They just gave you a few words casually and randomly. It's just like just now. We have this man called Tony Chan. He used the word resume. Does he understand the word resume? If he doesn't, go back and study a few years more. What do you mean by resume? You can resume the golf course because the golf course is leased by the administration to them. Only those in power can play golf there. Where will villagers live? How will they live? Have you ever thought about that? Have you ever assessed the impact on the daily living of the villagers and residents there? Otherwise, how can you balance public interests? Are we part of the public? Secretary, would you please give me an answer in a moment? Next, Mr. Chung Wai Kwong. Mr. Chung Wai Kwong is otherwise engaged and cannot attend this meeting. So I'm speaking on his behalf. Please bear with me. My opposing reason is like this. In our area, there are a lot of shop operators, factories, logistics industries, elderly homes, car scrapyards, garages, garages, et cetera. If you're going to develop Northeast Ante, you're just like killing the hen in order to get the eggs. The operators will no longer be operate. The equipment, facilities, machinery, plants, et cetera, customers, reputation, goodwill, et cetera, will vanish. In Northeast Ante, we have a hilly topography. We have a lot of plants, birds, animals. If the area is to be developed, they cannot survive. These animals and plants, flora and fauna, will vanish. You offend God. Cats and dogs may be put down or even more brutally. They may just be released into the wild. In fact, every human being should be born equal. But in this planning proposal, there are differential treatments. Selectively, you destroy certain villages. They're treated very differently from the golf course. This policy is actually discriminating Hong Kong people. So is Hong Kong people discriminating Hong Kong people? So how can our society have harmony? In the brainwashing advertisement, the government says that every Hong Kong resident should have a comfortable place to live in. But precisely, it is the same government that destroys our peaceful and tranquil life. So how can you maintain harmony in society? The purpose of having a government is to create a peaceful and happy environment for the public. So please withdraw your plan here. I strongly oppose it. I'm born a Ku Tong villager, die as a Ku Tong villager as well. Mr. Lau Mu Shing, I agree that Hong Kong should develop. But the most important question is how should it be developed? I don't understand why in this N E N T project, the golf course is not made use of. In fact, in P E two, this should have been included. Is it because Donald Zhang became an honorary member of the golf course, the golf club? That's why the site was not included? And then in P E three, I even more even more don't understand why the golf course was not included in the project and be resumed. And just recently, I eventually understood why. It's because Por Chen owns sites, land sites in the area. That's why the golf course is not to be resumed. Some officials want to retain their interest and membership in the golf course. So they tell Hong Kong people that golf is important. By playing golf, businessmen can talk business. Is this what human beings should be saying? A person with conscience should not make those remarks. In order to retain the golf course, the efforts of a lot of people are to be destroyed. Homes are to be destroyed, roots are to be destroyed. Is it that golf playing is even more important than people's homes? These people are not qualified to stay in this council. Por Chen said that for the sake of Hong Kong's development, the villagers living there will unavoidably have to sacrifice themselves. But just by sacrificing the enjoyment and pleasure of a minority of a population, tens of thousands of people's homes and thousands of jobs can be retained. Mr. Por Chen, there are job opportunities in the area. You're not just destroying people's homes, but breaking the rice bowls of our residents. No matter how many jobs are to be created by this proposal, I only see that the efforts in terms of businesses, jobs, et cetera, will all be destroyed as a result. Now, these people will move into P R H units and receive C S S A. Do you want them to do so? I want to know your opinion. You send hundreds of people to surround us. What sort of a bureau director are you? Is it because of the pleasure in playing golf, you're going to break the rice bowls of other people? Next, Mr. So Yatong. Well, Mr. So is otherwise engaged, I represent him. The impact of this Ante Northeast project on elderly homes would be huge. So on behalf of sixteen, the inmates of sixteen elderly homes, I'm trying to make some brief remarks here. In Ku Tong, there are over one thousand older inmates with hundreds of staff members. Many inmates have been staying there for many, many years. The relationships among inmates and between staff members and inmates are very harmonious. They mutually help one another. They take care of one another. So they really miss one another. Most of our inmates in these elderly homes live very happily. They're used to their homes there. If any ante is to be developed, these inmates may have to be distributed and dispersed to all corners of Hong Kong. Well, these people have left their home, they've left their family, their families were broken. So it's a kind of mental torture for them. Elders find it very difficult to get adapted to new environment and new lives. Because of our care for the elders, our sixteen elderly homes would like to have would like to stay in the same place. We shouldn't be relocated or demolished. So that our inmates will receive happy, stable services and live happily and peacefully. Aging is becoming more and more serious in Hong Kong. Most, or seventy five to eighty percent of our elders are indigenous villagers living in Shang Shui and Fanning. For decades, they've got accustomed to the environment, they've adapted to the environment. New town developments aim at creating a better tomorrow. That should be the focus of the Hong Kong government. If the government goes it alone, in order to develop any ante, it's going to sacrifice these elderly inmates. Then I would request that the golf course and the Fanning villa of the former governor should be used as a substitute. In Ante Northeast, these elderly inmates are subject to threats of destruction and all sorts of impacts. And the government is the biggest culprit. The government should set a good example. Don't just chant slogans. Time's up.
May I remind all who are present to maintain order? Well, please just speak when you are invited to, for others, please keep quiet as soon as far as possible.
Thank you. I'm a villager of Ku Tong Village. We've lived there for fifty, sixty years. And we have built up very good neighborhood relations. So what you propose here will damage our homes. Have you ever thought of our feelings for so many years? We are accustomed to the simple rural life here. And even the TV said that separation is very painful. This development plan will disperse us. All right, your proposal is excitation allowance and also rehousing in P R H. But do you think money can compensate the psychological suffering we face? No matter how much you pay us, you cannot trade the affection among villagers here. So I insist that there should be no removal or no demolition of our village. All right, you want to move us to P R H or give us excitation allowance? We've never asked for this. For elderly persons that have lived here for decades, they are so used to the rural environment here. They will never get used to lives in high rising blocks. When the Lotma Chow spur line was built, some villagers were rehoused to P R H. And elderly residents have not adapted to the new life. Some are depressed, some have passed away. So do you want to do the same to the elderly persons in Ku Tong Village? And I hope the administration can be practical. Please start a dialogue with affected villagers at once. Please do not just listen to views of our so called representatives because this is very unfair. Thank you.
Next, Mr. An Fei Ming.
I remind members of the deputations to remain silent in their seats. Otherwise, we have no choice but to to this gentleman. Please only speak when you are addressed to. Many deputations are here this morning to make comments. We don't want to waste time. All right, Mr. An.
Thank you. I'm a Ku Tong villager. My family has lived here for four generations. On behalf of villagers, I'd like to tell you our grievance because the government cannot be trusted anymore. It can control our fate, it can plan for our future. They have never tried to understood what we want for ourselves. So we are very against the N D N T N D As. So please listen to our views first and do your consultation using a bottom up approach. Please do not adopt this top down approach because villagers don't know about their future.
Well, the development of Ku Tong. Well, there are industrial as well as farm plots, farming plots in the village. As soon as the plan was announced, some unknown persons started to hold land. And as a result, farmlands are left fellow, the factories are no longer used. And the buildings or the structures are now empty. So as soon as the plan was announced, our lives have already been affected. The land is fenced up and it's been left idle there for more than a decade. It's not that it can't be used, it's just that we cannot use it. Can you become, really become rich by holding land? While can you can you think of our situation? The government claims that there is no land in Hong Kong. In fact, many people have hoarded land in rural areas. Landowners have hoarded land. They have adversely affected our lives. Now they use government policies and they say there will be new towns using private public sector mode of development. Most what angry us most is we came to know that Por Chen owns land in Ku Tong. He owns land there and the land is rented out for more than two decades. I think he is morally wrong. He claims that there is no land in Hong Kong yet, has never used his land properly. He just wants to hold land, waiting for inflation in value. Is it true that land can be hoarded forever? Please think whether by holding land you can increase your wealth. Well, he became the secretary for development last year. And as soon as he came to office, he took over the N D N T plan. Your time is up.
I represent Ms. Yun Jing Man. I'm a student of CU Hong Kong. I have lived in Ku Tong with third generation. I'm a Christian. Well, I know Mr. Chen is a Christian. I feel shameful for what he has done. I think he has gone against the teachings of CU Hong Kong as well as the Bible. Well, our school motto is that we must have integrity. We must be honest in all dealings. The students of New Asia College have always stuck to this teaching. However, Mr. Por Chen was caught drink driving and he also hoarded land here. I have never seen him appear once in Ku Tong, although I lived there. And he's using one lie to cover another. I think he has insulted the name of CU H K and New Asia College. As Christians, they have hoarded land there. And for their own interest, they want to drive Ku Tong villagers away. Well, according to chapter six, verses twenty four of Matthew Gospel, according to Matthew, one cannot serve two masters, either you serve the Lord or you serve Maman. I don't know whether you still remember what is Maman, but I hope you will not continue to shame the Lord. Well, of course, when Mr. Paul married Mrs. Chen, they promised to become one and to bear all things together. However, when the scandal was exposed, he shifted the responsibility to his wife. I hope he would not forgot, he will not forget his pledge and his wedding vows because of this, because of Maman. I hope Mr. Chen will not forget that he is a Christian. And please remember that he has to serve the Lord. And please do not forget your conscience because you want to get Maman.
And this is a Bible for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I remind uh, deputations that if you have any, uh, submissions, uh, or documents, please let the secretariat know and the secretariat will, uh, process it for you. Mr. Chan Kowai.
I am a villager of Kootong. Although, uh, we, it's been more than ten years after the handover. However, many of our policies is still, uh, uh, in the colonial days, like, uh, lend, uh, leases to, um, private clubs and, uh, recreational clubs. Many of them had their leases expired last year. However, the government never considered, uh, recovering some of the plots for housing development. And, uh, the, uh, leases were extended for, uh, more than a decade. And according to Mr. Chang Tek Sing, uh, these, uh, recreational clubs, private clubs can help to nurture a new generation of, uh, athletes. However, I've never seen target woods of Hong Kong, uh, coming out from our golf course. On the contrary, in the cycling, uh, sector, we have Ms. Li Wei Shi. And for windsurfing, we have Ms. Li Lei Shan. And for badminton and table tennis, we have got many elite athletes, but they were never nurtured in, uh, prestigious private clubs. The government wants to develop an N E N T and indigenous villagers of Kootong will be driven away, whereas the golf course nearby is, um, they dare not touch it at all. Under public opinion pressure recently, they have decided to recover one point five hectares of nursery, uh, from, uh, the, um, golf course and, uh, the sea's Fanning Lodge, uh, will be incorporated into a future development plan. I'm sure no villagers in Kootong can, uh, really enjoy, um, the benefits of N E N T because they won't be qualified to apply for public housing, not to mention private residential units in this new area. They have no choice but to go to live in subdivided flats. Elder persons, why do they have to suffer so much in their twilight years? This is a very controversial project and the, um, Secretary for Development is caught in this severe, serious conflict of interest. Uh, this morning I read from the paper that, uh, the CPG, uh, had, uh, the, uh, has, uh, um, the inclination to, um, ask, um, Paul Chan to step down, but it makes no sense, even if he is to be replaced by another, uh, Chen, whatever, Mr. Chan, all right?
Madame Gao Tai Che. I don't know how to, uh, speak. I don't want you to demolish my home. I've lost my husband already. If you put down my home, I have nowhere to live. This is tragic. It's really sad enough for me to loo- to have lost my husband and you will, uh, increase my suffering by, uh, pulling down my home. What should I do? I would die. This is tantamount to murder. I just don't want you to, uh, pull down my home. That's it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Lee Kun Hong, uh, Chairman of, uh, the Rural Committee of Shaanxi. Thank you. I'd like to say why Shaanxi supports the N E N T, N D A. We're in the far northern part of, uh, Hong Kong.
We support the plan. I know that, uh, both indigenous and non-indigenous villagers would be affected by the N D As. I believe the government can do better. Uh, development and, uh, rehousing are not mutually exclusive. Now, we have given proposals to the government. The government should not just view N E N T alone. The whole of anti-north should be considered together so that, uh, the coverage will be wider and and then you will have more room to maneuver when it comes to, uh, relocation. Uh, for instance, uh, for relocation and, uh, relocation institute, if you don't have to confine the boundary to Ping She and, uh, Takuling and Kootong, well, it, of course, in your development, some villagers would be affected. There would be some impact on their daily lives. Shaanxi has a small population. However, our area is big. If you include Shaanxi, then you will have more room to maneuver in terms of, uh, rehousing arrangements. So, uh, the whole anti-north should be considered together. Do not just, uh, confine to N E N T. Even if you withdraw the plan for N E N T, well, Hong Kong must move forward. We understand this. All new towns were developed from rural areas such as Chunuan and Sha Tin, they used to be rural areas. And for Pluv Cove, well, uh, six villages were relocated, indigenous villages. Well, what about the indigenous villagers affected? Didn't they have to, uh, make sacrifice? Now, I dare not say that, uh, sacrifice is inevitable, but when the government has plans, uh, that is demanded by public interest, I'm sure both indigenous and non-indigenous villagers are willing to help. Well, the reservoir was built for everyone in Hong Kong, not just for the rich. Everyone has a share. Uh, back then there was no Dongjiang water and we only relied on reservoirs for fresh water. Six indigenous villages were moved. All right, uh, time's up. Next. Mr. Lau Yun Ping, a resident association from, uh, four areas in the North District.
Mr. Chairman, I absolutely support the N T N, N E N T project. This is a long-term policy. I believe this will be a long-term policy because the earliest date to provide anything on the site will be twenty-twenty. As for the older areas, will the government consider them as well? I think in the next ten years, we'll have a tight schedule for housing. For Fanning, it has been developed for a few decades. Has it been saturated? I believe in Fanning, the government can redevelop certain land sites in order to increase housing supply. For example, in the old market, that is Ruen Woi in Fanning, just in the middle, there's a vacant site of tens of thousands of square feet. Will the government make use of it so as to boost the redevelopment of the older areas and to boost housing supply? And then along Shaanxi Road, there are infrastructure and ancillary facilities. There's a very sound road network. A great deal of, uh, farmland has been deserted there. So I believe you can boost housing supply within a very short period of time if you can make use of those land sites. So I hope that, uh, within a shorter period of time, you'll be able to provide more housing units. Next. Mr. Hao Chi Kang from Shaanxi District Rural Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me say something about the development of northeast N T. It's not just a district issue. It involves the overall development of Hong Kong. It will be a focal project. Of course, the most controversial aspects will be demolition, relocation and disputes with the local residents and villagers. Hong Kong has developed a lot of new towns. It all relied on communication between the public and the government. Why is it that we have so much controversy on this particular project? It's because we have an evil piece of legislation which stipulates that after a person has occupied a particular site for a certain period of time, he'll own the title to the site as well. Now, these unlawful occupiers should be driven away. I've actually exposed a number of such cases. You have watched such news on TV. There are numerous such cases and shameful acts are involved. Let me urge our young people not to model on these bad examples. You should work hard yourselves and create your own future. For squatter demolition, relocation and relocation of farmers, I have the following views for the administration's reference. Now, the, for the demolished squatter huts, their licenses can be retained. That's one choice. Another choice is to pay money, pay compensation and rehouse the affected. And then in the vicinity, farmland should be identified for these farmers to re-establish their homes and farms. Otherwise, as it stands now, everything is in a mess. I suggest that at Law Wu Station, by the side of the Law Wu Correctional Institution, the land should be made good use of. Mr. Chan Secretary, I think you're being too cautious. You only need to clar- de- make declarations to the Exco. You don't need to disclose all your personal particulars. So if a person owns land sites everywhere in Hong Kong, he shouldn't be a bureau director, right? Well, if a person at his age of forty or, in his age of forties or fifties and still does not own any property, he is actually a useless person. I will not withdraw this remark. Well, he's insulting others. Mr. Aba Chan, I strongly reprimand him. I think he's insulting many Hong Kong people. He is insulting Hong Kong people. Mr. Aba Chan? Mr. Chairman, you have to make a ruling. Here, many of our councillors don't own properties. I think he's insulting councillors as well as attending guests. Mr. Aba Chan, Mr. Chairman, I'm seeking a ruling from you. Well, I think, uh, the deputations have spoken. Quiet. Well, silence, 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 please, silence. Well, please don't engage in dialogues among yourselves. Mr. Aba Chan? Mr. Kenneth Lung? Mr. Chairman, you have to make a ruling on one of his remarks. If a person does not own any property in his forties or fifties, then he's a useless person. Should he make such a remark in this council, on this occasion? Is that remark insulting? You have to make a ruling. Well, the attendee has already made that remark and Mr. Aba Chan has expressed his opinion. Next, Mr. Hua Wen Kwong from Sun Kai Nong Yip Kap Kuen Yip Chuen Hui. Mr. Chairman, is it my turn? I ask that you make a ruling. Of course, you can refuse to make a ruling, but you have to give a reason. Number one, you have to give your reasons if you're not going to make a ruling. Mr. James To. Mr. Chairman, maybe you should discuss with the clerk and the legal advisor. If a member requests the chairman to make a ruling on whether or not attending officials, guests or members have breached the rules of procedure, you have to make a ruling. If you are not, if we're not satisfied, we can resort to other avenues. But, Mr. Chairman, you have to observe the rules of procedure. Anymore? Mr. Ip Kock him? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to have the legal advisor's advice on Mr. James To's remarks. We've invited the deputations and individual members of the public to come. They are not protected by the Legiscope House and Privileges Ordinance. So they are here to give their remarks. We cannot stop them from making any remark. Mr. Aba Chan seeks a ruling from you. Mr. Chairman, I don't think you need a ruling. I don't think you need to make a ruling. The speaker should be responsible for his own remarks. Well, I think Mr. James To's remark is appropriate. Let the legal advisor explain to us. Mr. Ronnie Tong? Mr. Chairman, perhaps you should ask the legal advisor under a rules of procedure, if an attending guest makes abusive or offensive remarks, including offensive remarks against members, then of course if the legal advisor says that the attending guest does not have any responsibility, then of course you don't need to make a ruling. But, uh, under the rules of procedure, councillor should make insulting or offensive remarks against officials, et cetera, et cetera. And you should make a ruling. Well, I've, uh, listened to members' views. We'll continue with this meeting and I'll let you have my views later. Mr. Chairman, if somebody else is to make offensive and insulting remarks, what should we do? So, Mr. Chairman, you have to handle this issue. Doctor Fernando Zhang? Mr. Chairman, I'm fifty-six years old now. I don't own any land. I feel being offended, so please make a ruling immediately. I've reminded the attending participants that they're not protected by Cap three eight-two Legiscope House and Privileges Ordinance. So for each and every participant, I'd like to remind him or her that he or she has to consider the consequences of his or her remarks. Mr. Chairman, I ask you to make a ruling. As a member of this panel, I feel that a participant has offended me. You are chairing this meeting, so you have the responsibility to rule whether or not that remark is offensive. It's very simple, so I hope that you'll make a ruling. As members of such strong views, I suspend the meeting for five minutes so that I can take advice from the legal advisor. Thank you.